Okay, we rolling, Justin?
Rolling.
Okay, welcome everyone to the special meeting of the Blue Lake City Council. It is Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would you establish a quorum of the council, please?
Yes, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protem Scholl.
Present.
Councilmember Scafani.
Here.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
And councilperson McCray is absent. And so that brings us to item two, approval of the agenda. I'll start with councils. Anyone that would like to move anything around on the agenda?
Nope.
Looking good. Okay, up to public. Anyone want to move anything on the agenda? All right, back to council for the vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Christopher Edgar to approve the agenda as delivered. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Item three, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake. That is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? And the mayor recognizes Kent Sawatsky.
Been spending a little bit of time in your municipal code. I find it kind of interesting. Some of your committees here are listed in there as far as how the procedures work. Other ones aren't. Well, one isn't. So I did make mention with Honley there that maybe it would be appropriate if the same municipal code is addressed regarding your arts and heritage commission, because it doesn't have in it, or I couldn't find it in the policies, for how you reappoint people and what their duties are. So you need to have that in your municipal code for it to be an actual commission. Regarding the function of the planning commission, I found this kind of interesting too. Dot sixteen dot one thirty, function of planning commission. Planning commission shall perform all the following functions. Periodically review and recommend revisions as necessary to the general plan. Implement the general plan through actions including but not limited to the administration of specific plan zoning or subdivision ordinances. Endeavor to promote public interest and comment on the understanding of the general plan and regulations relating to it. Your general plan is a dinosaur. Hasn't been updated since nineteen eighty-six. It's not consistent with itself internally, not consistent with things that have been done since. Highly recommend you take the time to go ahead and update your general plan. It can jeopardize many of the decisions potentially should things go to court, such as should somebody litigate on the Danco project in your ozone. Pointers. I have some sayings in life I found quite good. If it's not broken, don't fix it. If it is, fix it, but do not fix it in a way that makes it more broken. And I think that's something important for you folks maybe to do what you're doing there. And I see Angela Scholl is busy writing while I'm speaking. That's fine. We are used to being ignored. Basically, I think it's important for all of us to understand your municipal code. I was unable to find anything regarding bicycles in your municipal code. And I don't know, maybe it's there. I might do a public records request. But you have latitude on where bicycles ride, where they can't. In other words, where you can ride your bicycle. Some cities say you can ride them on sidewalks. Other ones say you can't. And one of my biggest concerns was brought up by the safety commission is a good safe route for people and riding bicycles where they could do it safely, especially important areas. So I'll address those topics a little bit more later. I did want to caution you that if you do make a decision that ends up with, after being noticed properly, loss of life or property that you failed to take an action, then you, as city council members, can be held personally responsible for those actions. So if I had to make you aware of that, you may wish to consult with your own competent council regarding that topic. Thanks very much for being to speak.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on a non-agenda item? All right, we'll move on then to item four. Resolution number one, two, two, five. A resolution of the city council of the city of Blue Lake approving the expansion of the Greenwood Avenue right-of-way adjacent to city property located at one, one, one Greenwood Avenue. And there's an accessory parcel along with that. So item four. General information is the city has received design and engineering funding to construct improvements along the city's designated truck route. The section of the truck route that encompasses Greenwood Avenue has been approved for construction funding by the California Transportation Committee Commission. As part of the design, the city will be widening the sidewalks, installing raised crosswalks, relocating fire hydrants, and making ADA and drainage improvements. In order to widen the sidewalk along the west side of Greenwood Avenue, the design proposes a modification to the driveway that accesses the northern parking lot of City Hall. The city maintains a right-of-way along Greenwood Avenue, and it is proposed to incorporate a portion of the driveway into the existing Greenwood Avenue in order to facilitate an improved pedestrian access and driveway. And there are attached maps and designs. So I'd like to open this, I guess, with our city manager. Any further remarks?
Yeah, I don't know if council has any questions. So Mike Bogut is here as well as Jordan Lucky, and they're both our engineering representatives. Mike obviously is the city's engineer. Jordan is our project engineer, and she's the, I guess, your engineer prepared for this, for the Greenwood project. So Mike and Jordan probably could answer your questions more specifically regarding the design. So I'm happy to defer to them for any specific questions you might have.
I guess the first question I have is that I was really hoping that we could underground the power poles along the west side of Greenwood so that the children wouldn't have to go around power poles. And I think I counted about six along Greenwood Avenue. What is the status of that?
Currently, it's we worked with PG&E for about three years, starting was twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen. And really, as we may tell that way, we do have underground fund to allocate, but those funds are are a small portion of what we're being required under, you know, and rules that we needed with PG&E. We just didn't make a lot of headway with that. So we we decided to pursue the timing to implement our Greenwood improvements without that you said we just don't have a funding.
And I think PG&E was pretty clear with us that they've got a lot of other priorities, and this type of project isn't necessarily one of them when you look at all of the wildfire resiliency, you know, work that they're doing and actually just rebuilding towns that have burned. So there's just not a lot of resources available.
So, go ahead.
That was mentioned in the previous meeting about the bulb outs for those specific ones, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get the, those required grits for passage.
Yeah, okay.
Or select guy wire and structure.
Okay.
So relocating the fire hydrants was also part of that, accommodate any, any structures in the sidewalk.
I don't know where you're pointing.
Is there any way we can get him on the mic?
Yeah, he needs to be on.
Do you want to go to the podium?
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you, Mike.
So there are bulb outs to deal with the impossibility of undergrounding the wiring along the west side of Greenwood. So there'll be bulb outs at every spot where there's a pole? Is that what I understand you say?
Correct. On there to extend kind of a back of block to get around those obstructions with the driveway. And there's one obstruction along, on the school side. But in general, we did the bulb out method. And the bulb outs do help with kind of the necking down and the traffic calming. So it served a couple purposes. You'll see a longer bulb out where I had a guy wire and a pole. So there's a couple where there's longer, kind of a longer bulb out.
Is the bulb out the sidewalk?
Goes into
Like, that's where, that's like the
Well, what we have
Pedestrian would walk into the bulb out around the power pole. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's something, yes. We combined it with a walk behind driveway to go behind.
Where we have the easement. Yep. Where we have the right-of-way. And that's part of why the resolution in terms of out in front of here, even though it's public property, city property, we're designating it with the APN, we're changing that. So it's, we'll be with, or at least the access to have that sidewalk to accommodate, because the property line kind of actually goes to front of curb from back of walk to front of walk how it currently is. So we're actually adjusting that to accommodate that.
That's what this resolution's about.
Yes.
Okay. We'll be discussing this more, I think, on the next item, which will be the truck improvement project design approval. But this is focused on just basically the access to our driveway here. That's going to change a bit. Okay. Understood. Are there any further questions from council before I open it up to public? No? Okay, keeping an eye on anyone that is on Zoom that may have a question. Let's open it up to public. Is there any public input on this? The mayor recognizes Mr. Sawatsky.
I have serious concerns regarding the way this project has been drawn up as far as engineering viewpoints and whatnot. My question, my understanding is, is that all these bulb outs that you have are bulb outs. Were feasible. In my opinion, they should have been bulb ins. There's room for that. You have a sidewalk. And the safety commission meeting I attended and asked the people there, and I won't speak for them, but the main question, one of the main questions was, well, where's the safe route for bicycles? And I believe the comment was made that they're to go on the sidewalk.
Mr. Sawatsky, can I call a point of order? That would be for
You can call it through them, I'm sure, but she will address me.
He's speaking of the next agenda item.
I think that's true.
So did you. I mean, you guys addressed all six of the bulb outs, but you wish me to wait? I will wait.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, let's get through with item four, and then we can move on to five and discuss.
We have one. Never mind, she took her hand down.
Okay. You see a hand there?
No.
No, it took it away.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a resolution in front of us, number one, two, two, five, a resolution of the city of Blue Lake approving the expansion of the Greenwood Avenue right-of-way adjacent to city property located at one, one, one Greenwood Avenue and access parcel number zero, two, five dash one, zero, one dash zero, zero, five. Do we have a motion to pass this resolution?
I would make a motion that we pass the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Elise Scafani, seconded by Angela Scholl to pass resolution one, two, two, five. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. Okay, let's move on to item five. And this is the Greenwood Avenue Truck Route Improvement Project Design Approval and Authorization to Release For Bidding upon final authorization by the California Transportation Commission. And just to let everyone know, that is one of the main reasons why we are having this special meeting. We do have a timeline. Our bid, our application, excuse me, has to be in by the nineteenth. So we saw the need to have a special meeting, and that's the main reason why. So we'll start with a discussion here. The general information is the city has received funding to design and engineer improvements along the city's designated truck route from the intersection of Greenwood Avenue and Blue Lake Boulevard to the city limits of Hatchery Road. The section of the truck route that encompasses Greenwood Avenue has been preliminarily approved for construction funding by the California Transportation Commission. As part of the design, the city will be widening the sidewalks, installing raised crosswalks, relocating fire hydrants, and making ADA and drainage improvements. City staff have been working on this project for over three years. Through the process of designing and engineering, the city has conducted numerous outreach and design meetings and has actively coordinated the design with the elementary school, the fire district, the industrial truck route users, as well as various recreation user groups and neighbors. The design is ready for submission to the California Transportation Commission. Once the design is reviewed and accepted by the California Transportation Commission, the city will be awarded funding for construction. City staff recommends releasing the project out to bid as soon as the California Transportation Commission provides their approval. As the project directly impacts traffic in front of the school, staff is proposing a spring bidding schedule with a summer construction date. And we have adjacent maps and information concerning this item. Manager Mager, would you like to add anything to the
I'm just ready to answer any questions. We've brought this to you previously. So if you've had time to look at it and have any further questions, like I said, Mike and Jordan are here to answer as well.
Just one small thing. I was looking at the the next page that has the Greenwood phase on it and under project schedule. Should that read the design phase will be completed January twenty twenty-five?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, we're on the agenda report, agenda report, item five, and then on the next page where it has the Blue Lake Truck Route Improvements Greenwood Phase. Halfway down the page on project schedule. Should that read twenty twenty, January twenty twenty-five?
No, because we're completing it now. Oh, the design.
Oh, the design phase. Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The design was
With construction. Okay. So, okay, so that, that helps me. Thank you so much. So then is there an anticipated completion date?
So, summer twenty twenty-four.
So it's going to take just those couple of summer months?
Yeah.
Awesome. That's the goal. Yeah.
And then this is part of, yeah, and this is part of a larger project too, that we're working on the truck route improvement. So we've been awarded construction funding for a portion of it, but we've been awarded design and engineering permitting, environmental funding for the full truck route. So it's kind of a phased construction schedule, but with an overall design project. And so the second part of this project will be from just past City Hall all the way to Hatchery Road up to the bridge to city limits.
Okay.
And that portion is still being worked on for the design phase as well. So that's, there's some additional considerations taking place to facilitate. There's some harder impact areas with that portion of the route, so.
So then the, the one point six million, does that adjust for this one phase we're talking about? Makes so much more sense.
Is Taylor Way part of the next phase?
Is Taylor Way part of the next phase?
Yep.
Not Taylor Way, just
Just Hatchery.
The intersection of Taylor.
Yeah.
As for concern for the citizens here on Greenwood, how will they be notified when parking is not available? So it says no parking cones will be used to let people know when parking is not permitted. So is there going to be
So, so part of the bid, once the bid's been, a contractor's been selected, that's part of their submittals will be a construction schedule in the specs. It talks about how you have to notify residents. So once we have a contractor selected and approved, then we'll have an actual, you know, one of the first submittals is their schedule, then that's when we will do outreach and communicate. And then there's a, is it forty-eight hours, I believe, in the specs? There's a certain period of time they have to notify residents of the actual, where there'll be, you know, where there's no parking in front of their house. So that's part of the coordination that we'll work with. And, and a lot of the work will be really the concrete flat work, the paving work, and it'll go relatively quickly. The bulk of the work is going to be doing the drainage and the sidewalk and constructing of the, of the bulb outs.
Is there some lateral work that's going to go on with the sewer line?
Going to do, and what we are going to do, and it's not on, on this agenda, not part of this project, because it's different funds. But we're enterprise funds or water funds. We're going to replace the water laterals on Greenwood. And the reason being, if you've noticed that we're, our water system went in the seventies, the laterals, the main line's actually in good shape. You know, I've observed a couple of areas where we've had done repairs and cut into that main line. And, and it's still, it's in good shape, but the laterals have been failing. How many have failed this? Well, in twenty twenty-three, we've probably ten or twelve lateral failures. So what I don't want is this one point six million dollar investment. We got to tear up the street to replace a lateral. So I recommended to Mandy that we look at lateral replacement that'll be separate, that'll go out ahead of that, but we'll see what's at work. And that's all through our control, not going through California Transportation Commission.
So we are proposing to bring that to council at the next regular meeting.
Yeah.
Because it is a little bit of a fast track, you know, trying to coordinate. The biggest impact right now is trying to coordinate with the school, because we don't want to do any work while school's in session, because that's where the bulk of the work is going to be. So trying to make sure we can get our spring bidding schedule, our summer construction, and then not have that impact to the school. So we're, we're kind of rolling on a fast track. We've been working on this for a long time, but, you know, then you get down to the actual construction and you start to see where your construction windows start to really shrink really fast.
And these funds aren't, can't be used to replace the, the water laterals. We'll do some, some storm drainage works as part of the the infrastructure work, but in terms of water laterals.
Yeah.
So that's why we're using separate process, and that'll get out just ahead. But then we'll, we'll optimize our funding, because instead of having to replace sidewalk and asphalt, we'll do
Right, everything will be opened up.
Yeah, we'll do temp patch, you know, repair, and then it'll be, the Caltrans funding will pay for the rest of the surface restoration. Which was being replaced anyway. So I'm just, we're just kind of leveraging our, our water funds.
Yeah, that's smart. Are there any other questions from council?
I have a few questions. I'm looking at your drawing. And I'm looking at the thick dark or black line. So I, this one down here by City Hall apparently is a crosswalk. And then there's a big, a big curve at the, at the turn off of Blue Lake Boulevard. So what is, what does that area represent?
Yeah, I can explain both those, kind of where you're seeing that, and then maybe get to a details. So if you go to C two point one, that's the next page. Do you have two or you don't? All right. Well, let me just explain what it is. It's like Greenwood Boulevard, like at the turn, right now there's paint.
Right.
Okay, obviously, that isn't extremely effective for slowing cars down, but what we're going to place there, that's going to be stamped concrete. So do you know the roundabout and the cobble? It's like, it's concrete, but it's stamped in a cobble fashion.
Right.
That's going to go pretty close to where the paint is. It's going to be slightly modified, but that's what that darker hatch is just showing. If you blew that up, you'd see the detail of that. And then what we're seeing for the crosswalk here in front of City Hall, that's going to be a stamped concrete. It's going to be a brick dyed. So what you've seen in town, we did the torch down, and obviously with the truck route, that doesn't last very long. That, that brick pattern that we have, those have pretty much been worn away. So we're going to do actually a, a stamped dyed concrete to look like brick, but it'll wear, because it's, it's dyed concrete. And that's standpoint, that sense.
And then this, this box that is drawn at the beginning of E Street, what does that represent?
B. So what you're seeing at B and at C Street, those are
No, I'm sorry, at E Street?
Oh, yeah, that's actually just ADA sidewalk. That's what we're doing. There was a ramp there, but we're redoing the ramp there to, so, and the valley gutter. So you're actually going to have concrete valley gutter, and we're redoing the ADA crosswalk there, so it'll line up. So that when, when you have a darker line, it's just the line work that's actually showing what that, that looks like. It's just, you're looking at it a
So that's a crosswalk across E Street?
Uh, yeah, it's a valley gutter too that you're seeing, but yes.
Yeah, and E Street's a little bit complicated. We haven't quite figured out the full kind of scope of E Street, because it's a real dangerous intersection for people coming from E Street onto Railroad right there. And so we're looking at making it maybe just a one-way. We've looked at maybe just blocking that off and making it more of a pedestrian pathway with just access for the houses that are on there. The goal really is to, to look at eliminating the possibility of, of coming out there into that, because that corner is really dangerous. It comes up on you really
It's a left-hand turn movement.
So is that not something that can be done now with, as part of this project?
Well, the improvements are being made to meet all of it, but we're just wrestling a little bit with how, what the implementation actually looks like. If we make it a one-way, if we block it off completely, if we make it a pedestrian access only to the sidewalks, kind of what that looks like. So that can all be accomplished kind of simultaneously. It doesn't affect the funding. It's more of a circulation need versus an improvement need. So it's a little bit easier for us to kind of work through some solutions without impacting the funding.
So you're saying you don't want to use any of the one point six million to solve that particular
Well, we are, but we're just talking about the actual ingress egress to it. That's a pretty easy solution. That can be as simple as signing it as one-way. You know, there's no
But if you're going to make it, if you're going to make it a one-way, doesn't it make sense to extend your sidewalk across the portion that's not going to be a drive-through area?
Well, you still have to have access. We have residences on that, and we have different access points. So we still need to kind of look at that and see what makes sense. So we don't necessarily want to block it off completely.
No, I just said, yeah, if we make it a one-way. I mean, I was thinking about this and thinking that it made sense to make this a one-way going towards first.
Right.
And to have diagonal parking on the, on the west side of E Street. And not to allow any left-hand turns onto E Street from Greenwood slash Railroad.
Everything we're mentioning now was some of the things that you just brought up.
And those are things that we can implement outside of this.
Is a sign or, or paint. So in terms of the, the concrete and all that work that's done through this, this grant.
Right.
So the other stuff we can do with the city with, with, again, our current resources.
Right. I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm a real stinker about, you know, doing everything one time.
Yeah.
If you can help, if you can help it, don't try to, don't have to redo anything. So anyway, I would just, being as, you know, you're doing concrete work there, rather than a full-length gutter, maybe half of that sidewalk and gutter, and the other half is just gutter. You know what I'm saying? So if we're going to turn it into a one-way that we just, we complete it with this, with this go-around.
The gutter, it looks like a wide dark line going across. It's a valley gutter is what I'm referring to. That's more for drainage. So that would still remain.
That would still, even if there's a sidewalk for half of it.
Yeah, whether it's one-way or
Gotcha, okay.
A left turn or, so the hardscape we're addressing, then it's just a matter of signage and, and paint of how we want to address that intersection. But you're correct, in terms of the left-hand turning movement is dangerous.
Right. Yeah, people are slowing down right around the corner and somebody can
You don't have the sight distance of what's coming down Greenwood.
Right.
Okay, you had some more questions, Elise?
Well, I heard Mr. Swatsky ask a question earlier about where it was possible to do the the bulb out, the bulb behind as opposed to the bulb out.
I could address that now.
Okay.
We do have on the east side, actually, the city has a right-of-way. We do not on the, the west side in terms of right-of-way. And so that's one of the reasons we're doing a resolution now. We worked with the school in terms of getting, gaining right-of-way for a walk behind.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the other point of this is traffic calming, so trying to visually narrow down while still providing safe truck route access, right? We have to have this. So a lot of this is more visual in terms of necking down the road. And that means having bulb outs going into the street, not away from the street. So part of this design is, is trying to design a street that's safer bike, pet, and vehicles. How do they coexist? How do they coexist? I don't know if you listen, I think there's been an awareness recently in terms of fatalities like during COVID. The US is one of the few countries where fatalities went up instead of down. So they've been doing a lot of research on why is that so? What's different? Or why, why, why is that occurring? And so some of the um, analysis has led to like our roads, you know, we're a newer country. A lot of our towns and streets are that are really car were designed once we have the car area where a lot of other countries may not have had that. So we, they're more, they they were around, they're older. So that's part of that. And then there's uh, and and where we've had a lot of growth recently has been in in the south and the southwest where it's more car friendly. So they're realizing those are some of the, that's not the only reason, but that's some of the factors. So they're, the city engineers are realizing we have to have a um, looking more at how do you slow cars down or how how do you work with that integrational bike, ped cars? And a lot of it is where people driving will slow down when you have, when you're in city areas or in where you have more pedestrians and bikes. It's not just traditionally what we did with stop signs and and speed limits. They're looking to have to do beyond that.
So you're saying an increase in fatalities, pedestrian fatalities?
Fatalities actually were increased. So there's been a lot of trying to understand why is that so? So that's again, that's, there's, there's a lot of factors, like there's, we have smartphones now. There's a lot of other things. But other countries have that. It's what's, what's different in the States versus other countries. That was one of the factors. I mean, there's other things, but that's in terms of design, that's one of the things that we have to factor in.
Are there any other questions from council before I open it up to the public? Okay, um, open it up to the public. Are there any comments on item five? Mr. Swatsky?
In the future, I suggest that uh, councils stay on point if they expect the public to stay on point regarding project and what's agendaized. What's good for you should be good for us. I, this project, in my opinion, is is falls in the category of of a not only fixing something that isn't totally broken. I was gonna come up here and say, yeah, we should fix this because we've had uh, twelve near fatalities in the last ten years and we've lost three children who've been killed. But I think the only, only record we have out here that I heard in public testimony was somebody down here had their cat run over. So I realize there's a problem here, but I hate to see it exacerbated by the actions taken. Uh, very relevant question. You should possibly consider delving into this before you make a decision. It is what does our municipal code or what are you allowed to do? What policy was adopted, which the city has latitude to do regarding bicycles? The Safety Commission concern that they brought up, this wasn't mine, but I totally agree with them. It is where is the correct access for bicycles? Well, I believe if I recall it, the media staff said that the bicycles now were to go on to the sidewalk. Um, that will work in a large city where you have eight foot sidewalks possibly. But when you already have cables and you have other constraints, narrow sidewalks, someone is gonna be coming in a, in a, in a vehicle such as uh, some people riding in our community, a wheelchair or something. You have thirty kids coming out of a school and yet you're expecting bicycles to work well with that. It it doesn't work. So what'll happen is most likely the children, especially during times when there aren't cars there, will go back to having bicycles in the street. What do the ball bouts do? Well, they force them into the traffic lane. They can't go across those. Uh, your ball bouts, if you're gonna use them, and you actually, in my opinion, should have got access all the way over to the fence for the Blue Lake there from the school. I can't see why they would object to that. They participated. I would be guessing that they actually offered that and moved the traffic as far away, your bicycle and pedestrian traffic as far away from cars. Just, it just makes no sense to have have this conflict. And so at this time, I would put you on notice that should you implement this, both you and your staff, should there be a loss of life because of somebody having an accident, hate to lose the life of a child or something, that you will be personally held responsible for this. Um, I highly recommend that you consider that on all your decisions. Uh, this is a lawyer's dream. Uh, my friend in Arcata made some uh, comments and uh, the person, the city didn't follow those things and he participated in his testimony. And there was a three million dollar claim. It wasn't a loss of life. I do not see this as helping the situation. I see this as potential hindrance unless you address uh, the need for uh, the bicycle thing. Maybe, maybe the mayor doesn't wanna ride her bicycle in that street. Maybe he would feel safe riding only on sidewalks when other people are trying to be there. But I doubt it. We don't have those large sidewalks like you do some places. Your trail designs do not permit bicycles to be on a trail unless it's a certain size, certain width, because that's a safety factor. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Uh, Julie? Yes, we can.
And crunching the street like that, I mean, I looked out and looked over as far as I could and looked down and my tire was like right there on the line, like, remember, I don't let the kid ever I've never let him get out my path, my driver's side. It's already too dangerous and it's high. You just do it now. So I really get like, I'm a parent. I feel like you should have done at least some lockstep at the school. Worry about the truckers, but once you guys feel this kinda hit us with the inside ideas, like two weeks. I'm seeing a lot of conflict and I've seen a lot of backlash coming back. I think that, you know, tomorrow we should table this a bit. We should have a demo. Should talk about this at the meeting, the school's grant tomorrow with school. Perhaps they can use that grant, pulling the monies we have, to maybe take some of that money out and give up more room. The playgrounds are inspired. I wanted to be on a public comment. They're inspired and I did sign council back. I have a senior now, second, third grade. There is some other stuff going on at the school. It means public action and it's a hazard, safety. So I just really hope that we can actually get them through. No doubt we need funding, although I'm gonna go back to the H cog meeting that was people staff, we've got uh, funding from our county this year. And we were gaining height, nearly seventy six thousand. Like, we need other areas getting fixed and I know we have to.
Julie, Julie, I'm sorry. Your three minutes are up. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments on this item? Jean Lynch?
Uh, Jean, four twenty Greenwood. Uh, first off, um, I wanna thank Mike for coming up and discussing the project with my husband. I really appreciate that. It's hard for him to come down to a a community meeting like this and and to uh, stay. Um, it made everything clear. Um, and I'm much more satisfied with with the process. And I didn't, uh, I noticed this afterwards. The fire department uh, on First Street and it it coming out, uh, and Chris uh, could probably clarify this better, but the trucks coming out and coming and coming down, there's a bulb out on the uh, west side. And then it comes down and there's a bulb out on the east uh, side. And uh, it kinda looks to me like if if the truck is coming through there, they're gonna have to straighten out, um, cause they're larger. Straighten out and come into the uncoming, uh, oncoming traffic.
So, um, I can't answer this because of the way he answered this at the last meeting. Those bulb outs are actually gonna be, if you look at the design, it's actually smaller than a car. Um, it's about half the size of a car going out into what is now our bike lane and parking area. So when you think about it, I can't remember how exactly. Yeah, yeah, six feet from the curb. So it's less than a normal car away from the curb. So if you add your legal distance from the curb of a car, which is eighteen inches or less, is where you're supposed to park the car. And most cars, even small smart cars are still five feet wide. So you're looking at that, the the bulb outs are gonna be less than a parked car. So if there's a car parked there, we still have the same problem as this bulb out. Yeah, it's one of the big concerns I know with everybody, with especially with the truck route, the truckers and with our community that these bulb outs are gonna cause this huge thing, but it's actually, it's still smaller than a normal car parked in that spot.
Okay, so um, on the west side, the sidewalk is gonna be larger, right? It's gonna be wider. And that doesn't really show, it doesn't show too much. So are you going farther in to? Okay, well, thank you. And thanks again, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
We um, we did, we have a software program that does turning radiuses for trucks. So we, a lot of these intersections, we ran that and we, we went through that with Green Diamond, North Fork Lumber, Gary Johnson, and with Kernan Construction. We went through the turning motions. We went through a lot of the what we are looking at uh, for the 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 truck route. So, uh, and factored in uh, the discussion when um, Green Diamond and Kernan hauls are big yarder, the the hundred plus foot trailer. Now, that still has a pilot car in the front and the back. So even as you stayed with parked cars, they still have to kinda take the center of the road for that. But hey, these are the things that we look at.
Mike, can you talk a little bit about um, what's happened between the Public Safety Commission meeting in December? Where um, where Scott from Kernan was here and expressed some concerns? Can you talk to us about what happened since then?
We did. We've actually met with Kernan, with Scott, particularly with Kernan. Uh, when was that? About three weeks ago, a month ago? Yeah, we went through and I had, that's why I went through the turning races. And actually, they had some good feedback and we modified some things on our design. So there's a few things that we adjusted based on that meeting with the uh, with the, the trucking firms.
Okay, thank you.
Scott Farley and Kirk Kernan.
Yeah, um, and I'd point out also, part of this feedback, we've done several walking tours. These plans were reviewed by by Dan Burton. He's one of the leading experts in the country that relate to actually H cog had a grant and brought him in in the city. Um, we helped sponsor that. We brought him to actually look at, he did a walkability with this, but then we submitted his plans to review afterwards. So there's some comments from him as well that we solicited and put modified our plans.
Thank you. And thank you for contacting the homeowners along the route. Thank you to staff for doing that. Is there any other public comment? Oh, did you wanna, Jordan, go ahead. Did you wanna add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit of explanation of our design considerations in response to some of the concerns that were expressed. So one thing is the concern of um, the bulb outs and you know, bikers or some, you know, kids going around that. And um, the, really the main purpose of the bulb outs and the other traffic calming features, the like the other surface treatments, the stamped brick um, within the roadway is to one, slow down the traffic, but two, also as soon as they turn onto Greenwood Avenue to make them feel like they're entering a community and so that they are being safer drivers. So if there is a kid biking, you know, within the road, the trucks and cars are more likely to see them and be aware and slow down. The other thing is we did um, pay note to where we were placing the bulb outs. We tried to place them where it would either be red curbed anyways, so like next to driveways, um, next to intersections. Or where they were needed to have the um, walk around around power poles or other obstructions.
Ask you a couple more questions? So I've, I've been thinking about the situation at the school. And um, I understand that the school doesn't have a concrete plan as to how, I mean, there's been some discussion about having some sort of a pull through into the yard there for drop off, but they don't have their plan solidified.
It takes a while.
So they don't have a design yet? They, they're waiting for funding to create a design? Okay, and I, I just don't, I don't know enough about how that could, how that design could come about. But I just, um, again, uh, don't do anything twice if you can do it once thing. Is there any possibility that that any of this work that could happen on this would, would marry up to what they're gonna do in the future? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. Any other questions from council? We'd like you to come to the microphone and we, we'd love to know your.
I had no intention to say anything, but I, I let you know that I am on board. I just was here to learn. But I'm a, of avid cyclist, a lot of cycling clubs and since about nineteen seventy five, seventy six, I've been to a lot of clubs and all over the place. And I, I'm on, I think this is a great idea. I, I know that um, Mike had one good point about how in the States where we are a car marinated society, it's gonna change. I, I, you know, I'm still get all the cycling magazines and in ten years, it's gonna be e-bikes and less cars. It's gonna, this, that's just how it's gonna be. I think you got the right idea. You have to, as soon as you turn off Blue Lake Boulevard onto Greenwood. The, I think the objective is that your, your objective is to look, look down Greenwood and okay, this is a, a community. This is not a, a raceway, which which it is now. I'm on Greenwood. You know, and I think everybody's pretty good, especially these big truck guys. The walk them are pretty good, but I think you're on track. And I think that these bump outs are the only way to travel and slow things down. Your point about there not a full width of a car, a real cyclist will go down there and it'll be fine. The kids can even go, if they have to, it's still gonna be safe. I think you're on, once again, you're on the right track. And in ten years, you're gonna be glad you did what you did because the cycle community, community is gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger, especially in Blue Lake. I'm on board with it.
Thank you, Ron. Wasn't too painful, I hope. All right, any other comments? Uh, Marty Granger?
I just wanna know a couple of simple things. Maybe it's obvious, but, oh, Mar- Marty Granger. Um, are there cars going to be able to be parked along that road? Yes, there's room for cars. Okay, the other question is, um, how do parents get their kids to the school? Do they have to pull in to the school?
Well, that's typically what they do. They pull over and they.
Not over, but I mean, pull, go into the parking lot of the school.
I don't think they do that usually.
West side.
Parking isn't gonna be removed. It's just gonna be limited. There's only a few parking spaces that are gonna be taken away.
Okay, so they can just pull over, park and the kids.
Yes, that's not gonna change. Very little.
So in fact, um, because of the school, that's one of the reasons we have a, a walk behind and worked with the school because that was in the white. Zone parking. I had a conflict, but we worked with the school so that we would not go into the street because that's their drop off white curb area. So we maintained that and didn't take that away with a bulb out into the street. And just wanna highlight again, we have a limited right of way to work with. If we had a fifty foot right of way, we would have had separate bike lanes. Uh, we, we could have worked something out, but we have a forty foot. Right of way to work with, so we, we're, that was one of our constraints with what we could do. Uh, and we felt uncomfortable. My stamp, Jordan's stamp, you know, when we stamp a set of plans, we're legally responsible. And we didn't feel comfortable having bike lanes with truck traffic and meeting ADA. Sidewalk widths. We thought that was dangerous, so. Everyone has their opinions. We're the ones that are putting our names to the plans.
As a cyclist, I try to avoid Greenwood Avenue as much as possible. Um, and I'm assuming that the garbage can will be removed from the crosswalk at the pool there.
Final thought, and actually we thought, we discussed this, just so you guys know, there's, there's two kinds of bike traffic if you think about Blue Lake. We designed this for the kids going to Blue Lake School.
Right.
There's a lot of through bikers that ride through from Arcata end up to. To wherever, but when they come through Blue Lake, we thought the intent, they should pull off on Charton and use our bike, the Annie and Mary Trail. To get through and not use Greenwood. That was our thinking. So hopefully, bike community will adopt that strategy.
Maybe we can make some signs.
Yeah, suggested bike route. Go this way. Um. Yeah, that garbage can was one of the things that Dan Burden mentioned when we did our walk around. He said, in all the. Six hundred plus cities that he has visited, he has never seen this one thing that we have in our city. And we're all waiting with bated breath to find out, what do we have in Blue Lake that nobody else has? It was that garbage can, that cement garbage can in the walkway at the school. He says, he stood there with, with his hand on and said, I have never seen this before. This is the first time. Woo, our claim to fame. All right, I digress. Um, so if there are no other further, oh. Uh, Jean, would you like to make a further comment?
Um, I was just wondering if this, um, on V Street, the crosswalk, uh, is gonna be lighted for, um. Access to the crosswalk.
It's gonna have the same, uh, flashing as, where there's one already there, we're gonna have that.
Yeah, that seems to be the difficult place, you know, for kids crossing.
Yeah, thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Jean.
One more question. Um, a fifteen mile an hour speed limit. It was mentioned to me by somebody who I've since learned as an engineer, working for Caltrans, that it's not legal. And I don't, I didn't hear all the details about why that might be the case, but I wonder if you could comment on that.
I don't think that's true because when Dan, when Dan Burden came around, he said, he liked the fifteen miles and he. And he said, you could make your whole town fifteen miles per hour.
Which I think you should.
Well, I don't know the legality of that either, but, um.
But it's a school zone, so school zones are automatically fifteen, can automatically be, be, um.
Lower.
Go lower, so.
Is that by, is that by California Department of Transportation?
Yeah, that was part of their, um, cause a number of years ago, we were trying to advocate for that. And then they changed the regulation where it became, instead of having to petition for it and do all the warrants and everything to justify it. It became an automatic that all school zones were fifteen miles an hour. So we were trying to get it extended even up onto the Boulevard. To be able to drop the speed zone up there because it's adjacent to the school. And so the thought was, well, if any adjacent road to the school becomes a part of the school zone. But they didn't, they didn't buy our argument for the Boulevard.
I remember, um, when I was the principal at Lafayette and we put that fifteen mile an hour school zone in and on. Where Lafayette is on Park Avenue, just off of Myrtle, Lafayette's about four blocks down. But those first two blocks, we couldn't mark off as a fifteen mile an hour zone, but we could for the two blocks closest to the school, which was really weird to me. But we had that same conversation with, with Caltrans about that. It's like, why, why can't the whole, why can't all of Park Avenue be fifteen? But they, they weren't having it at the time. Yeah.
And it's not just when children are present or during school hours. It's all, it's twenty-four hours a day?
I'm not sure because we also operate an after school program that goes till six. And so that was some of the concern is like, at what point does it change? And if, um. I mean, it doesn't hurt us to have it signed at fifteen. It's not, you know, um, but to differentiate those times when we operate and then we have. School sports and so there's kids there till sometimes eight o'clock at night, you know, playing basketball and things and it's dark, so. The cutoff, the school is actually physically active and open for much longer periods of time than just, you know, the three thirty pickup time. So it didn't, we just decided that we would just leave that zone alone at that point. And if we, if it becomes a question, then we may have to look deeper into it if someone is, um, wants to challenge that. But in my opinion, you know, when you have a school that's functioning and has functions late at night and things, it's still part of the school zone. So.
Okay.
Well, we just left it with just fifteen. So we weren't saying it any other way. So.
Yeah, because some, some school areas say when, when children are present, but ours doesn't.
Be that children can always be present, so.
Yeah, the difference between a yellow and a white sign. Uh, is the white sign is the law. It's always the law and the yellow signs can change. That's why when you go to a school zone and it's a yellow sign with the pedestrian, says slow for school zone. And it says only when children are present, those are suggested speed limits at that time. The white signs are the law all the time.
All right, uh, if there's no other public comment, then we'll come back to council. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Lorraine Ponte?
Yeah, hi, um. So I'm sorry I was late to the meeting, um, but I do appreciate, uh, the opportunity to ask a question. Um, in regards to the school, um, I do have very kids that go there, so I am actively dropping them off and sometimes picking them up. And I know during COVID, the school was able to have, um, access into and around the bus station. And that was cumbersome, I think, because the, the teachers and. Um, some staff had to work that to make it, you know, so you can drop your kids off and not have a lot of contact. Um, but I'm just kind of wondering, um. With, because I drive Greenwood every day in and out to go to work. Um, and often times drop kids off and pick them up, but. The, um, the idea of calming traffic is great. Um, I would like to see it extended on Hatchery Road. Um, I have a fairly young dog that can walk often and the speed, um, from. Greenwood on the railroad through on Hatchery, that's kind of where a lot of it happens and then down the other way. Um, so I think that some of these ideas are, are gonna be really successful. And I'm concerned that, you know, we're kind of like looking at the global use of streets. And trying to, you know, be part of that when maybe it's not always applicable to just. You know, the practicality of Blue Lake. The, the trucks are kind of, um, cumbersome when you're coming down the road. Sometimes they need to make wide turns. You need to pull over a little bit so that them have a good capability to do that. Um, I just wanna make sure that, um, those of us in regular sized cars and. Be good drivers and be courteous and have the room to pull over. Um, I also have a question about when we have events, if we're like Annie and Mary days. Um, we have, when we're trying to bring a lot of people in and they are parking on Greenwood. Um, because everybody's gonna have an e-bike to drive into Blue Lake or drive out of Blue Lake or ride their bike in or that, all, all that. Um, how do we accommodate us trying to bring people in to events? And have room for them to park? Where are they gonna park? Um, and I know that's not the popular way of thinking because we should be walking everywhere. Riding our bikes, uh, taking mass transit, um, which might work in the Arcata, but it won't work in Blue Lake. So I was just kind of throwing that out there, um, as to how we accommodate wanting to bring people in. To bring revenue into the city, um, when we are trying to keep drivers. Out, where are they gonna park?
Okay, thank you for your questions. Um, Mike is going to address a few of those for us.
Diagonal parking, it increases parking density. I think, you know, at least you brought up some good points. Those are some, some good right of ways that we see off of, uh, E and F and, you know, we haven't looked closely at that yet. But we, we actually have looked at, uh, some other parts of town for diagonal parking as well. So those are one way to offset what may be loss. You don't have a net loss. So we haven't done that, but, you know, that's a, a good point. Uh, Lorraine, so we can, again, think of what's net loss with parking through these, these improvements on this park route. We can maybe look at somewhat on the side, side streets or right near off of Greenwood. We can look at, explore that. But anyway, that would be my thought. And it's, we're losing a few spots, but again, we could look at net loss.
And I would also point out that you can look at Greenwood at any point during the day and not see a single car parked on it. I mean, it's during events, you're gonna have, you know, a need for more parking, but our everyday use of Greenwood, if it's the schools not. In session or they're not picking up kids at that point, Greenwood's almost empty completely. So we're not.
Very quiet, but my question was about when you have events. Greenwood gets busy, Charton gets busy. You can't really park on railroad very well because there's not much there. You wanna push it up into the more residential areas, um, that are closer to town square. Or I Street. I mean, you know, we've got issues on those two streets that haven't really been resolved either, but. I'm just talking about when we have, you know, um, the horse arena is busy or the pickle mall courts are busy. Or we've got, you know, multiple things going on at Crash Hall, Little League, um, you know, softball. I mean, it's great. It's great to have all of these people coming in and, and doing things and enjoying. You know, what we have to offer in Blue Lake, but we often have to think about where they, you know, I'm not talking about. Sense of Blue Lake, we, we walk, but I'm talking about trying to bring in people to. Generate revenue and enjoy what we have. Where are they gonna go? And, and I'm not talking about just, you know, one, uh, lending for Friday. Issue because this will affect money for crying, but what about when we're trying to pull in? You know, a couple hundred people that don't want to.
Well, I think, I think that, thank you, Lorraine. I think that that was addressed, that we're really not losing that many parking spots. If we're talking about this project. And the other thing I was thinking in terms of Annie and Mary Day, and especially when we had the medieval festival. People were parking all over the town, everywhere. And the same with the Mad River Festival when it occurs in Delarte. People park just all over the town. There's no parking anywhere. So people have been walking blocks and blocks to get to their. Event, basically.
We're a pretty walkable community.
But it's a walkable community and usually happens in the summer when all of our town looks really pretty and the flowers are blooming and it's a great thing. But thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments? All right, let's come back to council then for possible motion and vote. So I think the motion should look like.
Recommended action, right?
Yeah, recommended.
So I make the motion to approve the design as presented and authorize the city manager to accept the construction funding award and release the project out to bid.
I second.
Motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Christopher Egger. To approve the design as presented and authorize our city manager to accept the construction funding award and release the project out to bid. Is there any further discussion from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes four to one. All right, we're moving on to.
Four to one, what do you mean?
You just meant because McKay was absent, Elizabeth's not here.
Four with one absent.
Four with one absent. Yeah, it wouldn't be a nay. It would just be a, yeah, not here.
She'd be a little upset if we voted with her absence.
No, yeah, you can't say though that it's, you know, five to zero because it wasn't. Okay, yeah, four. Uh, item six is council correspondence. Is there any correspondence?
We did not have anything.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda, no items, reports of council and staff. I guess we'll go around and see if anyone's visited any. Meetings recently. We'll start with Christopher.
Uh, Mrs. Scafani did mine for me.
Oh.
I better say something then. Um, I went to the Public Safety Commission meeting.
Oh.
Um, a couple of weeks ago and maybe that was last week.
Yep.
Oh, golly. What all did we talk about? We talked about, um, analyzing, uh, call stats from the, uh, Sheriff's Department. And to, uh, to evaluate, um. Various means of, uh, crime prevention. And. I forget.
Okay.
I should have brought notes. I wasn't thinking about doing reports tonight.
I was glad because I could do my Humboldt. I can do my Humboldt Waste Management Authority report and then I only have to do my H cog report at the next meeting. So I did attend a Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting on January eleventh, Tuesday. And, um, Fortuna has never been a member of the Humboldt Waste Management Authority and now they want to be. So, um, we're having correspondence with the Fortuna City Council concerning, um, them joining the, uh, board. Um, and other than that, we extended our service agreement with Nancy Diamond for legal aid. And we awarded Humboldt Recycling LLC as the successful proposer for the Cummings Road landfill. Uh, transportation disposal services. So that is the only meeting that I've been to. Okay, on to you.
No meetings.
So, okay, then staff report, next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, staff report, next meeting. Um, and the next meeting will be in one week, January twenty-third at six thirty. Future agenda items. Um, I've heard that there's a planning commission opening. Is this correct?
Yes, we do. We're advertising for it now. Yeah, so Jack, um, Kirchvall moved out of Blue Lake.
Oh, dear.
So, um, I guess there's a whole lot of commission, uh, positions on all commissions that are expiring at the end of this month, right?
Yeah, so they're all, they've all been advertised consistently. So, um, we have a regular posting that we update. Um, when a commissioner changes or vacates, um, and so that posting has been, um. Has been regularly updated as per the Matty Act. Um, normally at the end of December, we do kind of a, a, a outreach. And, um, we did, we did drop the ball a little bit on it this year, so we were a little bit late, but we have. We have met the requirements of the Matty Act because we've been consistently posting the, um, commission openings, vacancies. And their expiration of terms. So those have all been posted at City Hall, um, The Grange and. At, uh, the post office regularly and then we. We've also been doing specific outreach for each commission that has a vacancy and posting that as well.
So there's a bunch of new vacancies though in the last couple of weeks, right?
Um, not new ones.
Well, we just learned, we just learned last week at the Public Safety Commission meeting that there's a new vacancy on that commission. And I think, um, and we're just learning about Jack Kirchvall.
Yeah, Dan, yeah, cause Dan Flores had, um, got a new job down in Napa, so, and then Jack had moved out, so, um, but we. Um, but we have been advertising those as well.
So we'll be getting those at the next meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, it's, yeah, if they, the commissioners who are re-upping, if they resubmit. And then we had some that took over seats that were expiring, like Kim Morvey, she was just appointed, but she was appointed to a seat that's expiring, so. Um, I would assume we'll just, normally what we've done in the past is just brought those applications back to you, so you could do a reappointment. Someone else could apply as well. Um, but usually the commissioners who have been appointed, you know, sometimes they're just filling in for a month. Until their seat comes vacant again, um, usually just re-up um their application. So we'll be bringing any of those, but those are actively being um advertised and they have been consistently.
I see a hand. Julie, did you have a comment? Thank you, Julie. Okay, any other future agenda items?
Um, we need to have our agenda review committee.
Yeah.
Our meeting should be Monday. No, it has to be this week, like tomorrow.
Oh, okay, that's right.
It should have been last Monday, which was a day off.
Which was a day, yeah.
Yeah.
The holiday.
Okay.
Talk about that after.
Okay, we'll talk about that after. That sounds good. Um, all right, uh, we're moving on then to item ten.
I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Elise Scifani, seconded by Christopher Egger to adjourn further discussion. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.